Well, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Avenue, School District Six. Today is the 13th day of November 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for her, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there, representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there, representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there, representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there, representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, whether you're joining us online or you're here in person, and we have a great crowd tonight because we have several that we're going to honor, and several presentations that involve our students, so we're excited about that. But whether you're here in person, online, thank you for joining us tonight. I just want to give us a few updates and address a few things. Number one, one big thing for us, I don't know how big it was for most of you, but one big thing for us is we had an election in the last week. And in that election, Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Natalie Mash were returned to their board seats. And they will be joined by Mr. Doran Azari, who will be replacing Ms. Terry Papas. And anyway, congratulations to those three. Congratulations also to the other candidates that ran and were not elected. It's a courageous thing just to put your name on a ballot. I do want to especially thank Dr. Campos Spitsi and Ms. Mash throughout elections. They require a fair amount of work, and campaigning requires a lot of work. But they were, in all of their campaigning and in all that work, were still able to make all of their commitments here with the board. Whenever we had school visits, they were there. Whenever we had other engagements in the community, they were there, representing District Six. And so, thank you both for not only taking care of things in the campaign, but also making all of your commitments here in the district. Also want to just let everyone know that next meeting, our next board meeting, will be Ms. Papas's last board meeting with us. And we do have a retirement celebration of sorts for her, and that's going to be at 5:00 at our next board meeting, and that's the fourth Monday of November. Also want to remind everyone that Saturday was Veterans Day. And so, as a board, we want to thank our veterans for their service. We know that many of our schools celebrated Veterans Day. And so, we also want to thank those schools for making sure that our students get to meet our veterans, and that not only are our veterans recognized, but our students get to see the great service that they've made to our country. It's also Native American Heritage Month in November, and so we want to recognize too that where we're now meeting is on the historic territories of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples, and thus, it's tied to the history and culture of these Native Americans. And we appreciate this connection and pay respect to those who stewed at this land throughout the generations. That's all that I have tonight. To move forward, we will need to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Avenue, School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda?
Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Papas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to board member comments and reports. And so, well, I can't remember where we were when who leads off this time. It might be Mr. Bentley. Will you open us up in board member comments and reports?
Let me just go alphabetically. Yeah, so it's pretty busy. It feels like it's been forever. It's been a couple of weeks for sure, but I did get to go to a couple of things. 10:24, got to tour Northridge High School and see if it's not working. Just closer.
Better.
Got to go visit Northridge and see all the stuff that they have going on with the bond improvement dollars that they got allocated, and just a tour with their new principal. And it was overall just a great, a great visit. They're doing a lot of fun things, and it's a great school. On 10:26, got to go to the Weld Community Foundation, Spread the Good Luncheon, which was really exciting, just to kind of hear and see all the things they're doing with the pathways and internships and stuff across the district and the community. Right? Was that that one? It's been a minute. And then, 11:01, we were invited to an election office tour that they gave just to the community in general, right? It wasn't just us. But I attended that, me and Michael did, and it was just kind of cool to see that process. I've never had the chance to kind of view that in person and to see the steps that Carly and her team take to ensure the election's certified and legit. It's astronomical, really. It was pretty complex, and if you got the chance to go, you'd feel the same, but 100% chance, there's no way that anything got crisscrossed there because they triple-checked, they're double-checked. So it was, it was really neat. And then, on 11:01, also later that day, I got to go to the Downtown Rotary Club with the district. They were invited. Deirdre, you're part of that one, right? And Brenda? So we got to join them, and...
I can't remember where we were when, who leads off this time. It might be Mr. Bentley. Will you open us up in board member comments and reports?
Let me just go alphabetically. Yeah, so it's pretty busy. It feels like it's been forever. It's been a couple of weeks for sure, but I did get to go to a couple of things. 10/24, got to tour Northridge High School and see, is it not working? Just closer. Better. Got to go visit Northridge and see all the stuff that they have going on with the bond improvement dollars that they got allocated, and just a tour with their new principal. And it was overall just a great, a great visit. They're doing a lot of fun things, and it's a great school. On 10/26, got to go to the Weld Community Foundation, Spread the Good Luncheon, which was really exciting, just to kind of hear and see all the things they're doing with the pathways and internships and stuff across the district and the community. Right? Was that that one? Spend a minute. And then, 11/1, we were invited to an election office tour that they gave just to the community in general, right? It wasn't just us. But I attended that, me and Michael did. And it was just kind of cool to see that process. I've never had the chance to kind of view that in person and to see the steps that Carly and her team take to ensure the election's certified and legit is, it's astronomical, really. It was pretty complex. And if you got the chance to go, you'd feel the same, but 100% chance, there's no way that anything got crisscrossed there because they triple-checked, they double-checked. So it was, it was really neat. And then, on 11/1, also later that day, I got to go to the Downtown Rotary Club with the district. They were invited. Deirdre, you're part of that one, right? And Brenda? So we got to join them, and they give a presentation of more of the career pathways and the stuff that we're doing at D6 with the CTE Center and all that. And it was really neat to see those people engage in the questions they ask and how excited they were to, to know that we were doing stuff like this with the trades and all the different career pathways, you know, to get kids college and career-ready. So been a good couple of weeks, and kind of glad to get in the holiday season and just back to life as normal, hopefully.
Ms. Mash?
Yes, so I unfortunately missed the visit to Northridge and the Weld Community Luncheon. I thought maybe just since it has been in print a couple of times, I recently started a new job back with Banner Health. I was with UC Health. They're both great. We have excellent options for medical care here in Greeley. And competition always makes things better, right? But so I've been doing a lot of orientation shifts, and my schedule's been a little bit less flexible. But anyway, we did get to visit Jefferson High School. We've been there recently to visit the CTE Center, but this was specifically to visit the high school. And I think we've kind of transitioned quite a bit in our school visits to having them be student-led, and that is always a treat. So they have a leadership team there, and four students told us all about why they love Jefferson. And resoundingly, their reasons were for the relationships that they have with their teachers and how much they feel cared for and seen, and that was really wonderful to hear. They loved their new building, although it was kind of funny, there was a few things that they missed about the old building, but that's okay. They felt like their family atmosphere, you know, has obviously come over with them. So it was really great to see the childcare facility there for student parents. And yeah, just the wonderful facility that they have. I also got to go to both Greeley Central and Greeley West theatrical performances. They're always a treat. The kids do such a wonderful job. The sets are amazing. Greeley West's show was as if you were watching a black and white movie, which is really cool, how they managed to do all shades of gray and black and white. And then, I would also like to say Happy Veterans Day, and the Veterans Day celebration at Bittersweet Park was very well done. And the Greeley Central marching band got to play, they played a medley of all of the songs from the Armed Forces. So that was another, yeah, great event. So we don't have as many school visits come here at the end of the semester, but best wishes to all of our students doing finals and finishing up, finish strong.
Ms. Sullivan?
First off, I'm just going to give my respects for the teacher we lost here at Northridge, Ron White. He was the English teacher. I only got an opportunity to work with him for a year, so that's actually where Rob is today, is at his funeral. And then, Ed Clark, we lost him. And I know him way back from when he was the mayor here in Greeley, and I know he had a big impact. And UH, or sorry, not UH, but University had put a video up on Facebook, and it was really touching towards the end of it. And it just showed how much the kids really respected him and how connected he was with those students. And a couple of months back, I ran into him and I asked him how things were going, and he just told me that with a big smile, he says, "I'm just marking off my bucket list." So I know he got to enjoy walking his daughter down the aisle. He was there for the birth of his granddaughter, and he's gotten, was able to take in a few more family events. So I really want to give my respects to those two. Moving on to the things I want to talk about is Jefferson. I would agree with Natalie that it was really neat because the students, when they were asked what was the most momentous thing or the thing that meant the most to them about the school as to why they felt so connected, not one of them said it was a new building. Every single one of them had said that it was because of the teachers and the connections they had made. And then, there was one student who wasn't able to be there on the panel, but he was in a video that they had shown. And he was a young man who had become a father. And he had said because of Jefferson was the only reason why he was able to maintain going to school, or he would have been, become a dropout. So it's really nice to know that Jefferson is able to service the students that were not able to serve service in our traditional schools, and just provide them that opportunity to be successful. Let's see, Saturday night, I finally got to go to ROTC Marine Ball. First year, I had COVID. Second year, I had my knee surgery. So this year, it was a great honor to see the cadets. They were very, very honorable to watch. And they gave a great performance with their ceremony, which honored past and present military. It was just a very fine tribute, a fine group of young men and women. And Major Kinsley has just, he's knocked it out of the block, out of the courts as to what he's done with these kids. So I really appreciated getting to be there because that's something I've severely gotten to miss each year on it. So I do also need to make one comment, and it's a statement. And I'm actually going to address you this evening, Michael. So the last meeting, I need to address from the last meeting, as well as a couple prior other situations. I make in a statement that moving forward, I demand the same respect given to the other board members when they're speaking. We don't always agree on beliefs and comments of all the board members, but nor do we have to. I can't recall a time in the two years that I have served that you have rudely interrupted any other board member but myself. Additionally, I have never done that to you or any other board member. We are all elected officials who hold equal value on this board, and we deserve the same respect when speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
So, yes, it's been about three weeks since we last met. And there was an election day in there, so I do just want to take a second to thank the voters for allowing me to continue in my seat. This is the first day that I get to sit here as an elected official. I've been in the seat for a year, but it's been in an appointment. And so, I take your vote of confidence very seriously, and I hope that I will do an excellent job for each and every constituent in District Six. I wanted to just point out all the schools that honored Dia de los Muertos on November 1st and 2nd. It's a tradition in Mexico that is, is very, is very dear. And actually, I'm not Mexican. I'm from El Salvador, but I was in Mexico last fall for Dia de los Muertos. And it really is, when you're in Mexico, it's bigger than Halloween, which is hard to believe here in the US. But everywhere you go, there's an altar. Whether you're in the gas station, there's an altar, or just at the corner store. So to see altares all over town, I was just overjoyed to think of all our families in Greeley who really identify with that tradition and the sense of belonging and inclusivity that they must have felt seeing that tradition celebrated, not just in our schools. Scott Elementary did a really great job. Chaplote did too, as did many of our schools in the district. But the library did an altar, and even at the Tonton Art Museum, there is a tribute to Dia de los Muertos, a day when we just remember our loved ones. I also was fortunate enough to go to one of the performances at Greeley Central, got to see the Puffs, which was kind of a take on Harry Potter. And it was about the Hufflepuff House and what happens to them. So it was actually not about Harry Potter at all, but about these very energetic, optimistic pre-adolescents. And my neighbor, who I've seen grow up for the last nine years, had a starring role in it, and she did amazing. And my kids played Harry Potter all day long with little fake wands, and it was adorable. The Northridge visit was exciting. We got to see, like Kyle mentioned, a lot of the updates that were possible because of the bond issue. The new principal there, Erin Allen, takes full credit for the new furniture in the cafeteria. So he, he did not want to have kind of those traditional old, long tables that get folded up and put up against the wall, you know, when you want to use the auditorium for something else. He championed having cooler furniture that had kind of semicircular couches and round tables and high tables and low tables. And so, the space looks really cool, although they didn't anticipate that all that cool furniture would be really hard to move when the cheerleaders needed to practice in the gym. So they're having to deal with that bump in the road. But I think the students are pretty happy with their new setup. I know one of the students who helped give us the tour of Northridge talked about how excited they are to possibly one day have kind of an obstacle course for their ROTC program there. And they even showed us exactly where they could already envision it happening. So I thought that was cool for one of the students to champion that and to get us on board. In the last few weeks, I also got to attend the Hispanic Women of Weld County Scholarship Breakfast, one of my favorite events of the year. I've been going to that event ever since I moved to Greeley. And just to see both traditional and non-traditional students get awarded very large scholarships to attend college and to pursue higher education. So got to see a lot of District Six students get awarded that breakfast. And then, a couple more things. Wanted to give a shout out to the Evans Public or Police Department and the Resource Officer, Teresa McClatchy. They partnered with some organizations and were able to provide 100 coats and boots for kids at Centennial Elementary. So thank you, thank you for that. I'm sure all those families are so very thankful. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a reminder to all families that it is open enrollment right now. That means if you're a family, a parent who wants to put your child in a school that is outside of your home boundary, that you have to enroll online to get them into a school outside of the boundary, and you have until December 20th to do so. Yeah. So, and then, just to piggyback off of that, one of the things that I'm most excited to announce is that District Six will be launching a new dual-language immersion program in Greeley and Evans. It'll be at Meeker Elementary School, and it'll just start with a kindergarten class that will be taught fully bilingual. So if you have four-year-olds that are about to turn five, and they're going to start kindergarten next year, and you want them to learn a second language, that program, they'll start in kindergarten, and they'll grow the program as the kids grow up. So it'll, there'll be a first grade class, second grade class, and so on. But if you don't live in the Meeker Elementary School home boundary area, you do have to apply for that program through the open enrollment process, which finishes on December 20th.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Ms. Pappas?
Well, it has been a busy couple of weeks and been able to participate in a lot of the events that have already been mentioned. I just would like to thank all of you for being here tonight. It's exciting that we have so many recognitions this evening and so many students and our educators to acknowledge and recognize. And I will say that over the past eight years, being a school board member, one of the best things about being a school board member is being able to go to on-school visits. So it was really great to have my last two school visits be Northridge High School and Jefferson High School. So I thank everyone for that opportunity. And then also, I'm glad Ms. Sullivan mentioned Ed Clark. I don't think that many people know because they associate Ed with university, but Ed was also very instrumental at Madison Elementary School. He coached the boys' football team there, as well as participating on the SAC, the School Accountability Committee. So just wanted to mention that Ed has been a presence in this district for a long time as well. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. I don't know that I have a lot to add to what's been said already. Northridge and Jefferson are great visits. Jefferson especially is always fun to go see because, as Ms. Sullivan said, those students are given opportunities at Jefferson that they just can't get in our traditional high schools, and it makes a difference in their lives. They do feel very connected to their teachers. They say that again and again and again. And it is, without a doubt, one of my favorite graduations to attend. They're all special. But when we go to Jefferson, when you know the challenges that that student body has overcome, we, yeah, it's always an emotional day when you see them walk across the stage. So always great to go see Jefferson. Did get to go see the Weld County, or go to the Weld County Community Foundation. And wanted to just give a shout out to Rand Morgan. Rand is, has been leading the Weld Community Foundation for a number of years now, and done that very well. And he is retiring, so it was something of a goodbye to Rand. And want to say how much we appreciate the partnership that we have with Weld Community Foundation. It's not an official partnership, I don't think that we have exactly, but it's, they provide a lot of scholarships for our students in Greeley and Evans. And did see both, both the shows at Greeley Central and at Greeley West. Those, again, were fantastic. Again, shout out to Aiden Derry, who was in that show for Greeley West. And then, I think that's about, just about it. Ms. Sullivan, I do apologize for interrupting you the other night. I did feel like it was important to state what was being said correctly. And so, but you're right, I should not have interrupted you to do it. So I think that's all, all that I have tonight. So we are on to our work session report.
The work session began with an overview of upcoming board meetings and activities. An overview of energy use in District Six was presented by Assistant Superintendent of Support Services Kent Henson and Director of Facilities Mandy Larson. Co-chairs of the Calendar Committee, Director of Human Resources Christina Crane, and Greeley Education Association President Aaron Snyder, presented draft versions of the 2024-2025 district calendar. The work session ended with the opportunity for board members and the Council of Student Representatives to provide comments on the work session.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is the Greeley West High School National Business Exam Recognition. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'm going to give this to you to introduce it for us.
Thank you, President Matthews and members of the Board of Education. This is a really exciting award, and I think Julie Ratliff and Richard Rich DeFaulter coming up as the teachers in charge of this. Come on up. Let us, let us start recognizing you early. And if you have students with you, bring them with you as well. Mr. Ratliff, or Ms. Ratliff and Mr. DeFaulter were here last year talking about the awards earned by the High School of Business. This is a national program with over 6,000 students nationwide in the program. It's a program that focuses on really preparing students for MBAs and getting them ready to go to college, get their master's degree in areas like financing and economics and business and business administration. And we have one of the finest programs here in District Six at Greeley West High School. These students tonight actually scored in the top 10% in the nation, competing against over 6,000 other students in the country. So with that, Rich, I'll let you take it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Board Chairman Matthews and school board members, Dr. Pilch. Anthony isn't here tonight. Sent me an email that he wasn't going to be here, but I thank him for the invite. It's an honor to be here in front of you this year again. Appreciate all of the kindness. Actually, today is World Kindness Day, and so this is really nice for us and for our students to be here. Before I get started, our new staff member that is here that is helping us, not new to the district, but new to West, Ms. Julie Ratliff, has done an outstanding job. There are eight classes that are associated with High School of Business, and she took it upon herself this summer and into this fall to pick up all eight of those classes. It required her to take a lot of online class work, traveled to Columbus, Ohio for a week, and took it upon herself to get herself ready to work really with our freshmen and our junior students. And I commend her for that effort because that is, it took me about two and a half years to complete that, and it took her basically about two and a half months, it seemed like. So thank you for all that work. I appreciate that. We wouldn't be here today without the help of Mr. Cranston and what he has done to help us push this program and keep it going. There's funds involved, there's funding involved with any of the programs, and for us to have this at West, it requires that as well. And so for us to do what we do, it requires that help and that positivity from our administration and from our counselors, and we receive that at West, and I couldn't be more grateful for that. So the first year that we actually, and I won't forget it because it was one of my students in 2016 that placed nationally, was a young lady in my economics class. And so we don't know how students do in the country until the following year, literally in October of this year, from the previous year's work. And I was so excited. I was at Conclave then. I saw Greeley West's name come up on the big banner, the big screens, and I was like, "Oh, my God, we have someone that placed." And then from there, we built, so from one student, then we got another student, and then we got three. I think last year, we had 12 or 14, and we had three again this year. So we're continuing to grow the program. We're continuing to build on what we do. So, Dr. Pilch, I appreciate your words earlier. The average scores on these tests are between 60 and 67% on all eight of the tests. And the students that are here, and even last year and the year before, they are students that are scoring in the 90s. And that does not go unnoticed. Their work in the room, outside of the room, the things that they need to do to get ready are fantastic. It would be remiss of me if I did not bring up It would be remiss of me if I did not bring up Cory Zulaf. Cory's now married. She moved away from the district. I worked with her for almost eight years. Absolutely one of the hardest-working teachers, colleagues, professionals I've ever had a chance to work with. And the two sophomores you see behind me were freshmen last year. And because of her work, that's why they're here, okay? I give her all the credit in the world and what she did before our program. It was fantastic, and so a shout out to her for sure. So, before I have the students introduce themselves, I have a student that's not here tonight, Austin Burns. Today's a big day in the district, there's a lot of things going on. It's the first day of winter sports as well. And so, he's in his basketball trials practice this evening. And, but I wanted to speak about him. Fantastic student, has an incredibly bright future. Besides the two students behind me, has an incredibly bright future. So, I just wanted to speak of him quick. And so, I'll have the two students introduce themselves. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here.
I'm Alana Hill, and last year I took Leadership and Wealth Management. And this year I'm taking two concurrent enrollment classes in business, both. Oh, I'm a sophomore. Forgot that one.
First off, I would like to thank the board members for having us this fine night. I am Ray Mundo Rubeno Campo Flores Jr. I was also enrolled in Leadership and Wealth Management. I'm also a sophomore, as you can tell. And to say, I'm a little bit in shock that I'm here because I took this test in 30 minutes for my final because it was my last one of the day, so I wanted to leave. And now I'm stuck here giving a speech. So, I would just like to say, just thank you for having us, and I wish you all the best.
Before I leave, I just wanna say something about Ray. Ray's also in DECA, I'm the DECA advisor at West. And Ray just qualified for the state DECA conference in Colorado Springs at the Broadmoor in February. Ray scored an 80 on his DECA 100-question exam, and also scored a 93 on his role play. Two of some of the highest scores I've seen since I've been an advisor for nine years. Very talented young man. I'm glad he's part of our program. You're gonna hear about him more down the road. I have Ms. Hill in my accounting class, and I will have 25 to 30 students take accounting next semester for concurrent credit. And she's amazing in my accounting class as well. And so, I wish them nothing but the best. But thank you tonight for having us here, appreciate it.
Thank you for being here tonight. I do think we may have some either statements or questions for you from board members. And so, no, Mr. Bentley has one.
Yeah, just first off, I wanna say congratulations to the students for test scores. Second off, I just kinda wanna make a statement about the business and that focus in general. Most of you guys know, but I own my own small business, I kinda fell into it. Wasn't really prepared, but one of my good mentors and buddies told me there's three classes of workers. There's workers themselves, there's managers, and then there's entrepreneurs. And you guys having already a business-focused mind is either gonna make you better subordinates. If you go into the work field, you're gonna be better managers, or you're gonna be that much better of an entrepreneur. Just, it puts, gives you a leg up with your peers and your colleagues. And so, I just, business makes the world go round. Everything that we do basically revolves around business in some way, you know, in the community and in society. So I just, I applaud you for kinda getting in the game early and paying attention to what's gonna make you, in my opinion, the most successful member of society you can be. So, congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Campos Spitsi.
So same, congratulations. How impressive to be, you know, in the 10th, top 10th percentile. That's really cool. Just the fact that our district has this program, I just wanna say what a gem for our kids to be able to get their feet wet and get them on the path to a master's in business administration. How cool is that? I don't know how many other school districts get to brag about that, but I think it's pretty cool that District Six offers that. And just like Kyle was saying, I see CFOs, CEOs, accountants, you know, just bright futures ahead for both of you. So kudos to you. And test-taking skills, it sounds like you have some really amazing test-taking skills, which number one thing is go with your gut. And it sounds like you were trying to get out of there, so you just went with your gut and it served you well. So, congratulations to you both.
And one thing about the test they do take, it's 100 questions. And Julie and I can't, we're not in the room when they test. We get them set up, we have a proctor in the room, we leave. And so, there's no hand going up asking, they just go. And so, it's really a true measure of what they know. So, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
I guess, I'm just curious what are some of the type of questions that are on there? Is it like math-oriented type, business math, or?
Yeah, great question. So, I have in front of me the standards, the performance indicators that they have to know about before they jump into this. And the work that we do, project-based work, also the objectives that they work on covers the following. I'll just read a few of them. So, business law, communication skills, customer relations, economics, emotional intelligence, entrepreneurship, financial analysis, which really leads into accounting, human resource management, and information management. So we touch on those while they are basically taking all eight of our classes in High School of Business. And so, that's something that's talked about basically every day. Either reading it, answering questions about it, but they are into it, yeah.
It's a great array of questions, thank you.
I don't see any more questions for you guys. So I'll just say, thank you for being here tonight. Congratulations to you three for doing so excellently on that exam. And congratulations to you as well, and to this program that has, shows up here year after year after year with students who do such great work. So, we're so very proud of you guys in Greeley West.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our Council of Student Representatives report. And not sure who's coming to make that report. I neglected to mention tonight, we have Natalie Louisa Valenzuela and Reagan Melendez serving with us at our board table. And thank you guys for doing what you do, not only tonight, but so many weeks and volunteering so much time. And thank you guys for being here tonight. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. And I'll just say that Mr. Allen was not able to be here tonight with the Council of Student Reps as he was attending the service for Mr. Wright. And so, he's passed it to his colleague from Greeley Central High School to Victoria. So I'll let her take it from here.
Good afternoon, board members, and thank you for allowing Greeley Central and the Council of Student Representatives to present at tonight's board meeting. It is my pleasure to introduce the CSR members that represent Greeley Central High School. It has been an honor to get to know these students and work with them this school year to make Central a better school. We have Lilia Tekla, Tyler McManus, Dante Parlin, and Reagan Medellis are the exemplar of an excellent high school student. They participate in multiple clubs and extracurricular activities. They are hard-working students and academics, and they demonstrate class, pride, and dignity in all that they do. Lilia will now speak about what Greeley Central has to offer.
Hello, my name is Lilia Tekla. I'm a senior at Central, and I'm Secretary for D6 Council of Student Representatives. And I'm excited to share with you a couple of the things that Central is participating at currently. Central is amazing at providing opportunities for its students in that it has several clubs, programs, and organizations that students can participate in. Many of these vary in specific fields and purpose and interest. Central has programs for students that wanna pursue education in the medical field, theater world, and even want to continue education in general. I personally like to dip my toes in many of these different opportunities and like to pursue different interests and passions of mine. I hold leadership positions in many of the clubs and programs I'm involved in, and this has allowed me to grow in my leadership and skills and develop my unique learning and growing habits. I have learned a lot about character through service, and it has impacted my own thinking of character and what it means to me and for me. I think Central does a great job of providing resources for students in order to allow them room for growth and leadership. The number of opportunities available to students continues to grow. A couple of things that Central is doing, currently is, in Best Buddies. Best Buddies is an international program that focuses on friendship between students with special needs and Gen Ed students. And it's currently planning an arc film festival event that we invite all of you to during March, which is Disabilities Awareness Month. And so, we are currently working on that. National Honor Society put on events in late October and early November to support the Hope Lives Campaign. And Key Club is having a craft day to make warm clothing for people in need on the 16th. And Key Club is also an international program. And it also works on servicing community and how to be involved in the community and how to serve your community. So it's super great for that. And then the Social Media Club, which is kind of a new thing that we started this year, is creating videos each week to keep students updated on the activities happening that they can participate in. Not to mention, the videos are entertaining, informative, and super cool. I enjoy the editing that they do. Student Council is planning a winter formal for students to enjoy. We're just waiting on that to get approved, but. And many other spirit-related activities to make school more enjoyable. And yeah, Student Council also emphasizes student voice in school events and just ways to make school more enjoyable. And we thank you guys for the bond funding because it has made our school feel safer and a safe school environment allows students to thrive and allows all the fun things happening now to happen. I think that having a safe environment always cultivates young and brilliant minds. And so, that is what the bond funding has done. And Reagan will talk about that soon. But thank you for your time. And Tyler McManus will now update you with all things social.
Hello, my name is Tyler McManus, and I am a senior in my first year at Greeley Central. I would first like to thank the board and all of its members, not just for the chance for mine and their perspectives to be seen, but also the perspectives of all future students in the Council of Student Representatives. In my brief time at Central, I have experienced an inviting and professional environment with unparalleled school spirit, both in school and during events. A large example is the enthusiasm surrounding our homecoming week events and parade. The sporting events are always packed with enthusiastic students and staff, proudly representing their school. Don't just take my word for it. Like other schools in our district, there's a wide variety of students, which as you know, brings with it a wide variety of perspectives. In particular, one of our exchange students, Gaia, whom I was lucky enough to meet this year, explained the events and our school spirit as a totally new experience that she would remember forever. She also highlighted the enthusiasm for the sporting events and the professionalism of the school staff. Connor, a sophomore, also shared the sentiment, while also stating that school events are simple, easy to attend, while also not costing much, allowing more students and their families to attend. Another student, Ash, stated that they felt like there was more inclusivity and less bullying in the school. She also stated that the school seemed to be improving in its events and activities. Personally, I have seen that there is a club, group, or class for everyone. Whether you want to join chess club or study philosophy, the enthusiasm and the positivity stays the same. One club in particular that I have frequently seen make a difference this year, not just in my school, but in others, is Sources of Strength, which is a student-led suicide prevention program. Along with this, however, comes with supportive teachers and counselors. They really take the time to get to know their students, not just to better teach them, but better help them. Out of the dozen or so students I asked, there was a common theme. Greeley Central is a school where any and all students have a place, no matter race, religion, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Where bullying is a rare occurrence that is not tolerated, students nor staff, the staff are professional in their work and provide students with a fair learning environment in which many students thrive. Thank you once again for your time, and here's Reagan with school updates.
Hello again, School Board. I am Reagan Medellis, a student at Greeley Central High School and president of the Council of Student Representatives. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the aspects of Central. I believe that it is incredibly important to communicate the highlights of our school, thanks to the district's contributions. The new element of Central that I am most grateful for is the enhanced door entryways. At our student entrance, where there would normally be unlocked doors for students' easy access, we now have a vestibule with security monitoring who comes in and out of the building. We also have a vestibule at the north entrance and a new gate, ensuring that the people at the school are those that should be there. Overall, I feel so much safer in my classes knowing that our entryways are locked and are being monitored at all times. We also have received major updates to classrooms. We have been able to maintain the historical integrity of the castle even while making essential updates to meet classroom needs. One particular room I wanted to highlight for the classroom updates is our tech lab, known, which I know, as the piano room. I take beginning piano in this classroom, where each student has a keyboard and a Mac computer with a music program on it. The fact that we don't all have to share one piano is really special because each student can advance their playing and get the most out of the class thanks to the quantity of equipment we have. Our arts magnet student and CSR representative, Dante Parlin, who could not be here tonight, also has some perspectives to share on the tech lab. He mentioned that the lab has been helpful for students because it has allowed students access to more tech that they could not have otherwise. It helps our piano class students all have their own keyboard to use and practice on. Our AP Music Theory students are able to use it and have the sound software to complete their work easier. We also have a music-producing class that uses the software every day to create their own melodies and beats using high-tech programs. We are so grateful for the generous gifts and donations we have gotten to be able to build this great space for our arts magnet students to use. Our AMP students are given so many opportunities that some other schools don't have and enjoy being at Central because of how many different arts activities they can explore. The tools and teachers available at Central have helped many arts students to grow and progress as artists. Many of our arts magnet seniors are now using the skills they have built to go out and do college auditions and take what they have learned here into the real world. And he says, "Thank you." So these developments are just a few of what has improved Central this year. And I know we all are incredibly grateful for them as they are a means for our safety and our learning. One thing that many students are concerned about, though, is our unsafe parking situation. That has, like last school year, resulted in serious injury. The general central parking circumstances are in need of revamping, potentially modifying our entries and exits. But the one thing that would be a really helpful fix is the rebuilding of the lot itself. We have incredibly deep potholes and loose gravel that result in our cars, mine probably being the smallest of them all, so the most vulnerable, being essentially tossed around. But overall, redoing the parking lots would be well-appreciated by all students that drive themselves to school and parents that drop their students off. We thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to be here and speak about our school that has been thoroughly improved thanks to bond dollars and the generosity and support of our district. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I don't know if there are any questions that our board members have for you guys. I am one of those parents that drops off a student every morning at Greeley Central. And yes, we could definitely do some improving on the parking lot. But I'm not seeing any questions for you guys. And so, I'll just say thank you again for being here. We appreciate your service to the district and taking the time to be with us tonight. Next on our agenda, we have the Student Health Advisory Council update. So, Dr. Pilch, is there anything that you would like to say for introduction?
I will just introduce Danielle Bach, our Director of Nutrition Services, who I think is coming to the podium to introduce our leaders and our team who will be presenting tonight on the Student Health Advisory Council.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and members of our Board of Education. I just wanna say a brief thank you for the support that Nutrition Services receives to host our wellness programs. Not all school districts have wellness programs that operate out of their nutrition team, so I feel incredibly blessed. As a member of the Support Services team in District Six, we don't always get to interact with our students. And like Terry said, going out to see the schools is an excellent opportunity to interact, and it's the best part of being a board member. The best part of being Director of Nutrition Services is to get to interact with these students. So, with that said, I'd like to invite Johanna Bishop, our Nutrition Education Specialist, to the podium to introduce our SAC students. And if I could also have Charlie Wright and Rachel Hirschman join her as well. Johanna?
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the Board, and Council of Student Representatives. Thank you very much for inviting the Student Health Advisory Council, or SHAC, to share at the meeting tonight. My name is Johanna Bishop. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Nutrition Education Specialist for the district. I'm one of the adult advisors for SHAC. The other adult advisors include Rachel Hirschman, our Wellness Coordinator, our Wellness Specialist, Charlie Wright, and Northridge School Social Worker, Jessie Cagiano, who could not be here tonight. It's an honor to work with such dedicated adults and inspiring students. Several students are here tonight and eager to share their voice and more about the work within SHAC. Later, you will hear from Lensa, Mars, Lilia, and Kaylee. My very first day at work here in District Six was exactly four years ago today, November 13th, 2019. And I started that day at work with a worksite wellness meeting in the morning and a SHAC meeting in the evening. And I'm very excited to mark this personal milestone with SHAC here at the Board of Education meeting. SHAC serves as a student-led organization focusing on peer-led student wellness initiatives. It first started in the school year 2018-2019 through the support of a grant from Kaiser Permanente. It has grown and evolved over the years and is now primarily supported by our very own Nutrition Services. One of the first projects SHAC created was to create a survey by the peers for their peers in our district to ask students what types of wellness programs and support they needed the most. Overwhelmingly, students said they wanted more support for mental health. That has been a guiding light for many of the initiatives of SHAC. When I get frustrated by how adults run the world, I look to the students of SHAC and am reminded of how much hope I have for the future. As an adult advisor, one of our goals is to provide leadership opportunities for students and is as much student-led as possible and a wonderful practice space for our future leaders. I would like to invite our students up to come and share more about their experiences.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the Board and Council of Student Representatives. My name is Lenza Mume and I'm a junior at Early College Academy. I have been with SHAC for a couple months now and it's been really great. It's an environment where everybody feels comfortable to share their own ideas and personal thoughts, whether it be personal or community-wise, to help with our plan of creating healthier habits. SHAC's mission statement is, "Through activities, resources, and media that reach a diverse audience, SHAC will create a culture which empowers students and the community to develop healthy physical, social, and mental habits, making a difference in their present and future lives." Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the Board and Council of Student Representatives. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Mars Alazar. I use they/them pronouns and I am a senior at Northridge High School. I've been in SHAC for the past five consecutive school years and I have learned so much more about myself, mental and physical health, and the importance of caring for my community. Some activities I have done through SHAC consist of writing thank you cards for teachers, making friendship bracelets, and so much more. Through the thank you cards and the friendship bracelets, we created a stronger sense of community and sense of belonging. When I think of what it means to be a community, I think of lending out an open hand when someone is in a time of need. I think of perseverance, honesty, and support. All of these things make a great community. I'm grateful to be able to experience that here in District Six. As a student, there are a number of difficulties I face on a regular basis: managing work in school, finding time to spend with friends and family, and most importantly, getting enough sleep. However, the most difficult issue I face throughout the school year is taking care of my mental health. I believe that by sending out mental health check-in surveys, we can all understand a little bit more where District Six students are mentally. In the most recent data from the CDC, in 2021, more than 42% of students felt persistently sad or hopeless and nearly 29% experienced poor mental health. In 2021, more than 22% of students seriously considered attempting suicide and 10% attempted suicide. By knowing this, we can make mental health a priority by knowing what issues District Six students face. SHAC continues to support the mental health of students, but we are just one group. In my opinion, students could use more support from the district. Thank you again for allowing me to be here today.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the Board and Council of Student Representatives. My name is still Lilia Teckla and I'm still a senior at Greeley Central High School. I have been in SHAC for about two years now and through SHAC, I have been able to serve my community and showcase my leadership skills while building character. I once volunteered to help update informational nutrition slides for the district. And by doing so, I have helped the district connect more efficiently to a younger audience. Our purpose was to inform students on the benefits of eating nutritiously. I am a student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, so my family and I have benefited greatly from the nutritious lunches our district provides. To give back to the community that has supported me, I spoke on how school lunch has fostered my energized and ready-to-learn mindset for school. I also provided feedback from a student perspective on some of the menu items available to students. This volunteer opportunity is important to me because it signified a moment in my life where I truly believed that I had the power to give back to the communities that have built me into the leader that I am. My educational journey would have looked different if healthy and nutritious lunches weren't provided during school lunchtime. I'm grateful that I didn't have to worry about food and could instead focus on succeeding academically, which is a privilege that many might not have. Even more so, I am grateful that I was able to say thank you to that specific community through acts of service. Being an emphasis for student voice in the district has allowed me to cultivate my own voice and use my voice to empower student health. In turn, I have been able to prioritize my own health by learning the importance of health through SHAC meetings and events. Like Mars was saying earlier, mental health is, I think, a really important aspect of student health and student education. And I think that SHAC has helped me learn how to really honor my own mental health. And one of my favorite services I have participated in through SHAC has been the mural paintings. Not only are the murals fun to do, we like play music and we're painting and we're all talking to each other, it's really fun. There is tangible evidence for the service we help provide. The murals all have their own meaning connected to different topics of health, including emotional, spiritual, relationships, and et cetera. I feel that the murals are inspiring. I also overall believe that SHAC is inspiring in its purpose, service, and commitment to student health. I'm always excited to collaborate with other students and mentors in SHAC because we've built such a dedicated and mindful environment. To say the least, I am happy with the work we continue to do. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, members of the Board and the Council of Student Representatives. My name is Kaylee Bumgerner and I am a junior at Frontier Academy. I have been a member of the Student Health Advisory Council for about six months. One of my favorite things about SHAC is how much we do in our community and the visible impact that we get to make. Two months ago, I received the opportunity to join a few other members of SHAC in reviewing new menu items for District Six school lunches. We got to answer questions about what we thought of school lunch and what we thought might make it better, and then we sampled a few new menu items. About a week or two after the meeting, the new menu was released at my school. Ever since, I've seen people at lunch being genuinely excited for foods and eagerly anticipating lunch for the next day. It's clear that SHAC truly serves its purpose and I can see its effect all around District Six. However, SHAC focuses on more than just the physical side of health. In March, we had a smoothie bike campaign. The smoothie bike went to each high school for a day. To earn a smoothie, you had to write words of encouragement for finals week coming up. At Frontier, all the small notes were collected and used to make a giant bulletin board full of affirmations and positive messages. There is so much that SHAC does to support and be involved in our community and I'm really glad I get to be a part of it.
Thank you guys for being here tonight. Thank you for your time with us. And I think we may have a few questions for you guys. So Dr. Campus Pitsy, you're first.
So during your last comments, I want you to know that while you were saying that your input being on SHAC for the last six months is visible because your classmates now look forward to lunch. Danielle and Rachel over there gave each other a high five. But yeah, SHAC, I think, is just special to me. I think when we think about mental health with our student population, what better place to go for the answers than to our students and to brainstorm with you guys what we can be doing better to improve mental health. I did want to talk about your beautiful mural, the wings. I think about these eight areas that you guys talk about for strength all the time because I think all of us can benefit, not just students, but adults as well. And the eight areas of strength that SHAC painted in this beautiful mural were family support, positive friends, mentors, health activities, generosity, spirituality, physical health, and mental health to build resiliency. So just applaud you guys for the work you're doing, for the great leaders that you have and that you are becoming. Thank you for championing this very important topic with your school body.
I think our Student Council of Student Reps have some questions as well. So I can't tell which one is first, but I'm going to go with you, Natalie.
Well, I kind of said this in the work session, but usually sometimes us students, we kind of forget about the impact that just like facilities does for us, the calendar committee does for us, and now the Health Services Branch does for our district. And so I just, as a student, as I was hearing all the stories and stuff like that, for me, it was kind of putting in perspective that I wasn't even connecting the dots. But for me, lunch, growing up, was a time where I kind of was able to just calm down, relax, enjoy my time with my friends. I met Lilia, where's Lilia? Lilia in elementary school at Maplewood. And Lensa, she goes to my school and stuff like that. And so lunch for me has always been a type of just like a community built and helped my mental health just by being able to talk to my friends. And like I said, just relaxing in general. So it's another thing that I think us students have to just kind of remind ourselves that you guys are just putting an impact in our lives that we should be recognizing. And so I just want to say thank you as a student for everything that you guys do because it truly is not only helping us, but everyone else in the district. So that's what I had to say. And now Reagan.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for the amazing work that you do, not only with the like health in terms of food aspect, but I think it's really crucial that we talk about mental health with students. That is a big part of being a student is kind of getting burnt out. And so I think it's really important that you guys highlight that. I just want to say that I have never gotten school lunch throughout my years of school. But this year, my friends have gotten lunch and I've decided, oh, that looks pretty good. And I have gotten school lunch more at school than I have ever in my life before because it is so delicious. It is delicious, it's nutritious. I feel like I'm actually getting a really healthy meal. It's like the best part of my day. So I just want to say thank you.
I had just one final question because it's been brought up several times by you and then Board members, and it is a great concern of ours when we talk about student mental health. And you mentioned you could use greater supports from the district for student mental health. And I would just like to ask you, and it could be any of our students, what would those supports look like? What do you think would be most helpful for you?
I had mentioned sort of like mental health surveys, I guess, maybe a couple times a month. I think overall, just checking in on the students, maybe giving teachers extra tools or time during the school day to give students the opportunity to express how they're feeling. So, you know, if you don't get burnt out, you know. Lilia said nap time. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer. And thank you guys for being here tonight. We appreciate all the time that you put into this and for joining us and sharing about what you're doing. So thank you. Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Education Support Professionals Day. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education in Greeley Evans School District Six adopts a proclamation declaring November 15th, 2023, Educational Support Professionals Day.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Ms. Pappas, would you read the proclamation for us?
It would be an honor to read the proclamation. Education Support Professionals Day, November 15th, 2023. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedoms, civility, and equality; and whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process; and whereas education support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students; and whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism; now therefore, I, Michael Matthews, serving as President of Greeley Evans School District Six Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, as National Education Support Professionals Day. I urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools. Given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District Six, this 13th day of November, 2023, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Before we go any further, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say about this proclamation?
I think we have Sasha Kahoon here as the President of the Classified Council to accept the proclamation, so come on up. And I will just add, this while Sasha's walking, that Natalie mentioned all the things that go on behind the scenes that students may not know about. And I think our support professionals are a big part of that, of just really keeping the wheels on the bus and keeping things moving and happening here in District Six and are often our very quiet, silent heroes here in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you on behalf of classified staff at the district and classified council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Board members? Well, seeing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Pitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And Ms. Kahoon, I do have a, do we have the proclamation? All right. I bet I've got this one in here. Again, as a Board of Education, we appreciate everything that you guys do in support of our teachers and certainly in support of our students. So thank you for all that you do. Next on our agenda tonight is our Superintendent's Honor Roll and Superintendent's Report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I will give it to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I have the honor tonight to recognize two staff members on our Superintendent's Honor Roll. And the first one was nominated by a colleague. And I think there's perhaps no greater honor than when your colleague recognizes the work that you do and takes up for you and wants to honor you. So I'd like to invite Laura Sneesby, who is a fourth grade teacher at Maplewood Elementary, to come up, please, Laura. And then I think you have several colleagues here who are here to honor you tonight. So let's just let them come up and share their love behind you as I talk a little bit about you. So come on, all you Maplewood folks. Besides that, you needed a little brain break. You're ready to move a little bit, right? So where is Kimberly Foster? Yeah, raise your hand. So Kimberly is the author of this nomination for Laura. And I want to just read for you what Kimberly said, what Kim said about Laura. She wrote, "Mrs. Sneesby embodies professionalism, dedication, expertise, and a passionate commitment to the community of Greeley Evans School District Six. Mrs. Sneesby puts her students first. She recognizes, celebrates, and embraces her students' social and emotional needs." Mrs. Snees- Mrs. Sneesby is a veteran master educator. She's also the site facilitator at Maplewood for the Greeley Evans School District after school program there. She also helps with the extended learning opportunities and also runs the 21st Century Program at Maplewood Elementary. Laura consistently engages in her own professional development, and she is laser focused on perfecting her craft and growing professionally. Laura Sneesby exemplifies what it means to be a successful educator in Greeley Evans District Six. And I will say, she exemplifies what it means to be on the superintendent's honor roll." Congratulations, Laura. And I think all, you know, anyone who gets a recognition like this, we don't do it without our colleagues, right? And the support of all those around us. And do you have a few things you want to say, especially with your colleagues? They're waiting for you to talk. They're all waiting for you to talk.
I'm just really overwhelmed, overwhelmed and deeply honored. You know, it's amazing to be recognized like this when you're doing something that you're passionate about and that you enjoy so much. It's, I love the grant world. I love the after-school programs. I love summer school programs. I just love working all of them and facilitating them. And to receive an honor for something you enjoy so much is just incredible. And standing up here, sitting down here, listening, and the support of the staff, which we couldn't have the programs without them, but listening to the amazing students that are here, I look around and Natalie is a former student, Lulia is a former student, all part of the after-school program, Jaime is here to support. And it's just, words can't even express, it's amazing. All Maplewood, I mean, just all the programs that we did. So we should be proud of these kiddos.
Thank you. It's an honor to recognize you on National Kindness Day. Thank you. Natalie, was that your kindergarten teacher?
No, that was my fifth grade teacher. Yeah, Ms. Hall over there was my kindergarten teacher. I'm like, I felt so emotional hearing all that because I just was like remembering all of the memories.
And the meeting started, Natalie said, "My kindergarten teacher is here. Can I go say hi to her? Do I have time?" So I didn't know who it was for sure.
And then my fourth grade teacher, Ms. Kramer, I, it's an emotional day.
Thanks, Natalie. And then the next superintendent's honor roll honoree is someone I have admired throughout my time here in the Greeley Evans School District Six, and that is Mrs. Amy Graefy. So Amy, would you come to the podium, please? So I know, Amy, that we have some Greeley Central staff in the audience who might be here for you, or they might be here for Avid and AP. But those of you who are here tonight and want to join in recognizing Amy, please feel free to come up and stand behind her so she doesn't have to stand there by herself. Or you could just leave her there because she's being honored for really an amazing reward. So come on up, folks. Oh, yay. So Amy has been selected and has received really one of the most outstanding awards in the state of Colorado. She was recognized as a 2023 Lifetime Achievement Award winner from the Colorado Association for Gifted and Talented. This is a big deal, a really big deal. And we are honored to have you in our school district and to represent us, Amy. It's a special recognition of her dedication and her efforts in the name of gifted education and working for the gifted students and their families and this community. This award was presented at the Colorado Association of Gifted and Talented State Conference in October and on a leadership award night. And Ms. Graefy has 22 years of experience, they're telling me, it's about right, here in public education. But her work also includes research on effective programming options for children who are gifted, as well as meeting the needs of underserved students who are gifted and are high potential learners. And in Amy's time in serving and working in our gifted and talented program, we have seen a dramatic increase in student numbers who are identified as gifted students and particularly students from underrepresented groups. So Amy, we so appreciate your leadership, your expertise, and your work here in District Six, and we miss seeing you as much as we used to get to see you. So if you would like to come to the podium, that would be great, if you want to say something.
I was not prepared to speak tonight, but I do want to acknowledge that I grew up as an educator here in District Six. I feel like the recognition that I've received lately is due so much in part to the wonderful mentors and collaborators that I've had in this district. And so it means a lot for me to be here tonight for this. I appreciate it and I thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Amy, and congratulations.
Our superintendent's report now.
Thank you, President Matthews. So I will just tack on a little bit to your announcement earlier, President Matthews, about the reception for Vice President Pappas. Director Pappas has served on the board two terms, full eight years, and is term limited. And our next board meeting will be her last board meeting, but that evening at 5:00 PM, we will have a reception that is open to the public here in nightshade, right next to the boardroom here. We'll have a reception and a celebration of the work that Terry has given to District Six. So I hope you all will join us and you'll let others know as well. I also want to announce the ribbon cutting for the new addition at Heath Middle School. This is really quite the work that has gone on at Heath Middle School. It's going to look like a new school. That ribbon cutting will be November 29th at 2:00 PM. If you're a former Heath student or teacher, you may want to join us at that event as well. Dr. Campos Spitsy mentioned open enrollment a little bit. I just want to clarify on the open enrollment window. We began taking applications on November 1st, and those applications will close on December 15th. There is no first come, first served. It's a lottery. After the 15th, we run that lottery, and you will be notified if you've chosen to open enroll to another school other than your home school of attendance. You'll be notified on February 1st and basically have that month of February to provide a response, either an acceptance or denial. If you don't respond, then somebody else will get your spot. And it's helpful to us if you do respond so that we can begin to backfill those spots. We do have in District Six, over 40% of our families who open enroll to another school other than their home school attendance, which really has been work that we have all done to provide lots of choice to parents and to create a lot of focus schools and to support our charter schools as well, to make sure that families and students are in the school that they feel is the best fit for them here in District Six. Dr. Campos Spitsy mentioned the dual language immersion program at Meeker. We are so excited about starting that up. The students in the Meeker attendance area will be given priority. And we do now have, we do now have a link on the Meeker website homepage, as well as on the district open enrollment page, that if you are in the Meeker attendance area and you are a kindergarten, incoming kindergarten parent, you can select that dual immersion program. It's English and Spanish dual language, and we do hope to have about 50% of children who come from first language English-speaking families and about 50% of children who come from first language Spanish-speaking families. So far, we're at 50/50 as of early last week. We had three English-speaking and three Spanish-speaking who had already enrolled, I'm told, but I'm sure by now we've seen more applications come in. Really excited about that program. As Dr. Campos Spitsy said, we're going to just start with kindergartners. So this is just for kindergartners, and then it will roll up and be a full strand through fifth grade there at Meeker Elementary School. We've hired the lead teacher, and we are excited and ready to go with that program. And Dr. Campos Spitsy, it was one of the early questions she asked when she came on the board, is what about more dual language options? And so she's maybe more excited than I am about it. And then I wanted to mention a Toys for Tots drive we're doing here in the District Six office, but anybody can participate. The Marine Corps Junior ROTC at Northridge, they run this program. It's one of their volunteer, many, one of their many volunteer programs that they do. But we'll have a couple of boxes here in the district office for you to bring toys in, new toys, brand new toys, during the month of December to donate to Toys for Tots. So I hope you'll participate in that. And I think I got it. So again, it's a great day to be in a school board meeting on National Kindness Day and be able to recognize so many students and staff and to hear from our students at the table here. It's really, really a lot of fun, and I'm super proud and happy to get to do that. We do have just one more meeting before Thanksgiving break, and then we'll have one board meeting in December before winter break. So before you all know it, we will be in 2024 very quickly. So we're going to keep things moving here tonight and here in District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And we have had some great recognitions of students thus far, and I think we're going to get to hear from a few more students. Our next agenda item is Innovation 2030 update, and it's student learning and achievement Avid and Advanced Programs. And so, see Dr. Dattery coming to the podium? Dr. Pilch, is there anything you need to say? All right, we'll hand it over to Dr. Dattery then. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight alongside all of these wonderful people. Joining me up here, Mr. Brian Lamos, our Director of English Language Development and Instruction, as well as Ms. Amanda Krieger. She is our coordinator for all of these programs, which we will be sharing with you this evening. We are talking and sharing some information with you this evening about AVID, which stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination, most of you know that, also on advanced placement classes and programming, and our International Baccalaureate. Our AP and our IB programs are high-level courses that provide students with the opportunity to earn college credit while they are still in high school. And then AVID provides that support system so that our students are able to then access and be successful in these, as well as many other high-level coursework. So we want to be able to share with you a little bit about what's happening in this work across the district as it's important work. So to begin, as we do for all of our Innovation 2030 updates with you, is just to remind us of our mission and our vision as a district, and that this is the work that guides us in all of what we do, as well as our values and beliefs. And while all of these, I say every time, they're all important, we love and appreciate all of these that we follow across all aspects of our district. But the two that we really, as we talked about, that really stand out with this is really, truly knowing that every student, every child can achieve, and that these courses and this AVID opportunity really provides that foundation for our students. And also just promoting that access, opportunity, and choice so that all students have the opportunity to do what they want to do. There are four focus areas in our strategic plan, and the one that we are focusing on tonight is student learning and achievement. Specifically, this is in Goal Two. This is an action item and work that is in Goal Two. And there are two outcomes that we really work toward in this, and it's around third graders, making sure that they are improving annually on those state math and English Language Arts assessments, as well as increasing on-time graduation rates. And that we work to align our system in PK through 13 to meet grade level and graduation requirements through personalized learning plans for all students. And that's the objective that this specifically aligns to. So as I turn it over to Amanda and team, I just want to share with you that, again, there's three parts to this work tonight. AVID, Advanced Placement, and International Baccalaureate. And they all work in tandem to meet our district goal, to provide our opportunities for students to have access, as I mentioned, to that rigorous content that prepares them for post-secondary options, whatever they may be. AP and DP are college-level courses, which are then supported by AVID, and AVID provides a framework for students to become self-advocates for their learning, as well as engaging in that high-level academic coursework of AP and diploma program courses. So taking an AP or a DP course and sitting for those exams truly helps our students to stand out on those college applications. AP and DP courses showing up on students' transcripts show that they have challenged themselves with rigorous courses. Success on those AP and DP exams also show that that student is ready for college coursework in those different subject areas. And so most four-year colleges and universities in the U.S. grant students college credit for taking and passing those assessments, and as long as they have those qualifying scores, and which we'll share more of that with you this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Krieger, and she's first going to start off sharing a little bit about what's happening with AVID. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and President Matthews, members of our board and our student representatives for being here to celebrate with us all the successes in our AVID, AP, and IB programs tonight. And I would be remiss if I didn't first say, it takes a village. Look at all these folks and all of our students who volunteered to come here tonight because these programs are so impactful in their lives. So I want to honor our students for giving their time for coming tonight and our teachers for doing that, and also to thank all of our AP and IB teachers across our district. I want to personally thank them for the work that they do and all of our students who don't take the easy route. They take the difficult pathway of these college courses. So I want to thank all of them as well. So AVID's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. The goal of the AVID program is to prepare students with the skills they will need to follow their chosen career path, be it college, technical school, military, trade school, or other post-secondary training in order to become economically independent, community-minded citizens. This is the 15th year of district-wide AVID implementation in secondary schools and the sixth year of AVID implementation in elementary and K-8 schools. AVID is currently implemented in 24 District Six schools, and the district-wide AVID goal this year is to increase student high-level thinking through inquiry in academic and elective classes across the content area utilizing WICER, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading Framework, so that all students are engaging in academic discourse and academic writing. Summer AVID professional learning opportunities, both in District Six and through AVID Center's Summer Institute, support implementation of AVID methodologies throughout the school year. I would like to introduce to you today Sofia Vasquez, a sophomore, and Zaven Ontiveros, a junior, both from Greeley West High School. Sofia and Zaven are both AVID and AP students, and I just found out Zaven is also an IB student, and I should have asked Sofia, are you as well? Okay, you're just, okay, there you go. Well, if you would help me welcome them, please.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here today. I am Sofia Vasquez, and I am a sophomore at Greeley West High School. This is my second year involved with AP and AVID, and there is no doubt that the two have contributed to my success in and outside of school. The idea of college has always stuck with me, but there have been times where it seemed too unrealistic, or that maybe I didn't have what it took to go to a good college. But AVID has made college realistic for me, and it's made me realize that no matter my socioeconomic status or background, college is waiting for me. As an AP student, it can be difficult at times to understand the fundamentals of an AP class, but I have been able to do so through the habits and organization skills that AVID not only preaches, but teaches. But once I graduate from college, then what? What will I do then with all I have learned? Well, I will carry these skills throughout high school and college, but also my life. I plan on going to college and taking the skills that I have learned and continue to learn and apply them to my increasingly difficult classes, because AVID teaches skills useful in high school and beyond. It can be hard at times in life to find resources that will help you in the long run and to find a community that is willing to help you reach your full potential. And that is why AVID is so valuable. It is valuable because it acquires attributes that we look for in order to be successful. And that is why AVID has had an impact on my school life and my life outside of school. I am happy to share my experience with AVID and AP. Thank you.
Good evening, District Six Board members and Council student representatives. My name is Zaven Ontiveros. I am a junior at Greeley West High School. This is my second and a half year doing AVID and third year being involved with AP, and this is my first year being open to IB. AVID has really been a foothold for me. AVID has really been a foothold for me in my educational journey at West and has opened many opportunities for me, whether that be out of the classroom, inside the classroom. It has opened my mind to attending different things. Like sophomore year, I was my teacher, Elizabeth Dent. She had inspired me to step out of my comfort zone and enroll in programs and sports and get involved with different things like Mexican-American Studies. I did knowledgeable sophomore year, which is like a Jeopardy-style club. And I currently run a cross-country and track, and I feel like I wouldn't have been comfortable enough to do that if it wasn't for AVID because freshman year entering AVID, I didn't do it first semester, but I did it second semester. And it was kind of scary at first because I had gotten, I had a, people were telling me about AVID, how it was strict and this and that. And it was all that it was tutorials, and it was just horrible and like, don't do it. But I found that very, very false. It really helped me gaining confidence. Like even right now, AVID opened the opportunity for me to speak here tonight to you guys. Normally, if I had an idea of it or anything, I would have been comfortable enough, I would have been scared and not went and did this. But I think AVID is without a doubt like the most important thing that I've done in high school, and it has changed my life and changed many students' lives, like most definitely. And it really just prepares you for rigor in college. And so this year on Halloween, we had got to visit CSU. And I have never been set a foot on CSU. And it was opening to me to see CSU and the diverse culture that they have there, their football program, their amazing food that they provide there. They have many, when we were there, they had told us they had 10 different, like, like serve yourself type of food services, buffets. And the year before that, we had gotten to visit CU, which was the first time I've ever visited a college campus. And I think that was really what inspired me to pursue AVID and to see where it could take me with my future and attending future colleges that we may visit. Next year, we get to visit University of Denver. So I'm really looking forward to that. And I just, I really love AVID. It's changed my life drastically.
Thank you, Sofia and Zaven, for sharing your thoughts with us. The number of students enrolled in the AVID elective and AVID Excel classes has consistently increased over the past six years with a significant dip in 2020 and 2021 due to the cohort schedule during the peak of the COVID pandemic. As we have added grade levels to AVID in our elementary schools, more of our students have requested to continue on with AVID as they enter secondary. Sections of the AVID elective have been added to meet the requests of students moving through the grade levels. The data for our AVID graduates is always encouraging. The data tracks each graduating AVID class, so this is data for the 2023 seniors who graduated this past May. Along with tracking the number of students who complete four-year college requirements, as you can see on this slide, AVID also tracks the type of classes students take. AVID students are expected to participate in rigorous academic courses such as AP and IB. And of the 2023 AVID seniors, 97% took at least one AP or IB course, and 85% of them set for at least one AP or IB exam. Our AVID seniors are also encouraged to pursue financial aid opportunities, and 89% of the graduating AVID seniors submitted the FAFSA, with 48% planning to attend a four-year college or university, 37% planning to attend a two-year college, and 2% planning to attend tech school. In addition, 29% identified as English language learners. AVID provides a support system for students to access classes of high rigor, as you heard from both Sofia and Zaven, and those classes such as AP. And each AP course is modeled on a comparable introductory college course in that subject area. Teachers new to AP are provided with the opportunity to attend AP Summer Institute in their respective content area to learn strategies for teaching AP from veteran AP teachers and to learn how to prepare students for the format and content of the AP test. That is an opportunity for those students to earn that college credit. AP teachers are also provided an opportunity to engage in AP horizontal teaming in their like-content areas during the summer. And during District Professional Development Days throughout the school year, the AP teachers also have the opportunity to network and expand with members of their AP horizontal team. AP courses are important to our high-level instruction programming, and this slide lists the 25 AP courses offered in our District Six Comprehensive High Schools. We are so grateful to our community for passing an MLO so that we were able to purchase consistent district resources for AP courses that align with the College Board suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides and exam preparation for the AP test. AP teachers across the high school have engaged in district curriculum and resource adoption process, resulting in board approval of updated resources for students district-wide. This year, AP French Language and Culture will work through the process of resource adoption and will bring a recommendation to the District Curriculum Council and to the Board this spring. And District Six is also engaged in a pilot of the new AP Precalculus course at Greeley Central and Greeley West with 86 students across three sections. The two teachers piloting AP Precalculus will discuss their experience with advanced high school math teachers from across the district later in November. And based on the student impact of the pilot, the group will make a recommendation on whether to move AP Precalculus to the District Curriculum Council as a new course. I would like to introduce Tom Fraser, AP teacher and AP Instructional Lead at Greeley Central.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I will be brief. These young ladies are going on their 14th hour of a very long day. That does not get you out of homework, Natalie. Between the two of them, they have taken 10 AP courses. Since we started off the night talking about data, I didn't look up all their test scores, but I know Sabrina did outscore 350,000 other students last year in her AP Lang exam. That's pretty impressive, right? They are amazing students. We appreciate your support. And I'm going to let you hear from them because nobody wants to hear from anymore.
Hello, my name is Sabrina Ruiz-Horsman. I am a junior at Greeley Central. And I would like to talk about how AVID has helped me correlate with AP. AVID has brought a more, is more successful in my AP classes due to the community that I have and that I could study with and ask for help when needed. AVID is a community, and we work together. We don't, you know, push each other off and be like, no, you have to learn this by yourself. Since AP requires many students to take, or since AVID requires many students to take IB classes, we are all in it together. And AP classes as well has helped me step up to the plate and understand that I could do hard courses and make sure that I am prepared for colleges. That is my plan after high school. And just talking about how the AP teachers are so helpful as they make sure that we understand what our curriculum is about, and they make sure that we are understanding the curriculum and adjusting for what we need and how they could help us succeed in those classes.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Chides Salazar. I am a student at Greeley Central. I'm a junior. And I want to also talk about my experience with AVID and AP classes. As I am a first-generation student of my family, I think AVID has really helped me adapt to these classes that I thought I was not academically prepared for because during my middle school years, I knew nothing about AVID until my Algebra I teacher, my freshman year, introduced me to it. And I was, I didn't know anything about it. So I was just like, okay, like, let's get into it. And I did have AP Human Geography my freshman year in which I stumbled across a bee, even though most would say it's a great thing. But for me, I think it could have been better, you know? But I think with AVID, I think it helped me adapt new study skills, organization skills that helped me create new experiences for myself to now I see myself. I definitely developed a higher way for me to succeed in high school. I've upped my AP classes from one to four this year, taking AP Precalc like they mentioned. And I think AVID has done a great job with, like my peer Sabrina said, our teacher makes sure during tutorials, we have the opportunity to engage with each other and communicate our problems with each other and maybe even become teachers within ourself when we cannot get to our teacher. And I feel like, I think we should expand AVID throughout middle schools because it's a really great opportunity for everyone just to get their foot out there, you know? Not a lot of people like to take the big role on AP classes because they don't know anything about it. And these AVID teachers are amazing, and they help you with everything. And like my AP teacher, Mr. Fraser, he's amazing this year. And I think if it weren't for AVID or if it weren't for these teachers that are involved with AP, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I wouldn't be the 4.0 student I am today without these teachers and AVID. So I really want to thank them, and I really want them to expand on our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, Natalie, and Tom. Like AVID, the enrollment in AP courses has also steadily increased over the past six years. Scheduling during the COVID pandemic impacted enrollment in 2020 and 2021, but since that time, enrollment has bounced back. And this year, we have the highest number of students enrolled in AP courses with 1,719 students taking at least one AP course this year. Many of our AP students take multiple AP courses and pass multiple AP exams throughout their high school years. This slide shows the longitudinal data for the District Six Comprehensive High School AP Scholars. Based on the 2023 AP exam results from our comprehensive high schools, the blue bar represented the 64 students who were awarded the AP Scholar designation for receiving a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. The red bar represents the AP Scholars with Honors designation, which was awarded to 16 students who earned an average score of at least a 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more AP exams. Additionally, the yellow bar represents the 17 students who received the AP Scholars with Distinction designation for earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. This year marks the highest number of AP Scholars with a total of 97 for the comprehensive high schools. Congratulations to all the students and AP teachers for this accomplishment. In addition to our AP Scholars, eight students earned an AP Seminar and AP Research Certificate for earning scores of three or higher in both AP Seminar and AP Research. And four students from Northridge High School earned the AP Capstone Diploma for earning a score of three or higher in AP Seminar and AP Research and on four additional AP exams of the students choosing. We are also fortunate to have a comprehensive International Baccalaureate Program or IB program in District Six. This is comprised of three programs. The Primary Years Program in grades K through 5 offered at Dos Rios Elementary; the Middle Years Program in grades 6 through 8 offered at Brentwood Middle School; the Middle Years Program in grades 9 and 10; and the Diploma Program for grades 11 and 12 offered at Greeley West High School. The aim of the IB program is to develop internationally-minded people. IB learners strive toward the IB learner profile characteristics, which include principal, caring, thinkers, enquirers, open-minded, knowledgeable, risk-takers, reflective, communicators, and balanced. The PYP helps students to start their lifelong journey as caring and culturally aware learners who are active participants in their own learning. The MYP builds a solid academic foundation by developing students' confidence in managing their own learning and making connections between what they learn in the classroom and the real world. When students reach the Diploma Program, they strengthen an inquiring mindset and prepare to excel at a career and to lead a meaningful life. The three schools continue to engage in vertical alignment to provide a clear transition from the PYP to the MYP to the DP. They also continue to work together to increase awareness for students and parents of the opportunity to follow the IB pathway through the grade levels and to encourage enrollment in the Diploma Program at Greeley West with the goal to increase the number of students who choose to enroll in the high-level DP classes and the full Diploma Program. I would like to introduce Jonathan Ledspike, the Greeley West DP Coordinator.
Thanks, Amanda. The IB program offers students a unique learning experience in the modern world of education. Students involved in the IB program, whether it's through a single course, a mix of course, or the rigorous Full Diploma Program, are all challenged to forge their own path of understanding in each area of learning. Student choice guides their learning, and high academic standards ensure that learning is focused, refined, and ultimately successful through mediums which highlight students' strengths. I'd like to introduce Theo Hirsch and Sophie Dupard to speak more about the program.
Thank you for having me. So my name is Theo Hirsch. I'm a senior in the IB program at Greeley West High School. So I've already gone through a whole year of the DP program. And so I've spent a lot of time in a lot of like rigorous coursework at Greeley West High School. I've taken a lot of IB classes, and I've taken a lot of IB classes. I'm currently enrolled in a full IB schedule. And so I kind of want to talk about that diversity and uniqueness in IB that I've noticed. So one thing that I really appreciate about the IB program is the fact that it encourages students to explore topics that they're interested in. So in each class you take in the IB program, students have to write something called an internal assessment as part of their score for the IB test at the end of the year. The internal assessment is basically just, it's almost like a passion project in the subject that you're, in like the particular subject you're in. So like, last year I was in IB Chemistry. I wrote about like diabetes management and how it pertained. Because I'm a diabetic, so I kind of just, I got to explore that. And like, it was very personal to me, which was really cool. And so just like in all of my classes, I get to write these fun essays where I just explore research. And it's really cool, and I praise IB for letting me explore a lot of stuff I'm interested in. I also appreciate about the IB program that the program de-emphasizes just like brute memorization. IB exams focus on using critical thinking and applying what you know. And so there's not a lot of like multiple choice. It's pretty much all just, they give you a question, and you're expected to use what you know in the class to solve the problem, basically. But just basically from your own knowledge, which is really cool to me. And I've been so grateful for the program. I think it's really prepared me, it's really prepared my oratory skills, my writing skills and everything. And I feel so prepared for college now as a senior because of the IB program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sophie Dupar, and I am a junior at Greeley West High School, enrolled in the full IB program. The Greeley West IB program has allowed me to take classes with my most motivated peers and has given me more creativity with how I learn, as well as freedom with what I learn. Similar to what Theo said, over the past few months, I've gotten the opportunity to debate and change my opinions with others who think differently, learn required material through creative projects in history, and gotten to choose the topics I want to learn about in science. Through IB, I've been able to better understand others' views, and the smaller, more focused classes have helped me enjoy class time and understand material better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, Theo, and Sofia. After the 2018-2019 school year, the pathway to IB Diploma Program courses has been opened through the removal of ninth and 10th grade prerequisites. Students are now able to take individual Diploma Program courses Students are now able to take individual Diploma Program courses even if they do not choose to enroll in the Full Diploma Program. Students who earn a Diploma Program certificate must earn a score of at least a four out of seven on a Diploma Program exam in a single subject area. The 22-23 data reflects the first time that Greeley West removed barriers to entering the IB Program at the junior and senior level. West is beginning to see exponential growth in the participation of the program with 112 students currently registered for testing in the current 2023-24 school year. In 22-23, there was an increase in student enrollment in DP courses, but a decrease in overall registration for DP exams. And we are working to encourage all students who enrolled in the IB course to sit for the exam at the end of that course. Students who earn the Full IB Diploma must earn 24 points across six subject areas, complete the Extended Essay, the Theory of Knowledge Course, and Creativity, Activity and Service, or the CAS Project. As we look to increase enrollment in the Full IB Diploma Program, we would like to celebrate that the class of 2023 had nine candidates earn an IB Diploma with 50% of the candidates earning the Full Diploma. The international IB Diploma candidate pass rate for 2023 in 149 countries and 3,090 schools was 79.67%. The average total points for Greeley West students who passed the Diploma was 27 and the international average was 30.24. In addition to the IB Diploma recipients, four students passed at least three IB exams earning nine or more credits each. Greeley West had a total of 59 students who took at least one IB exam this, in the 2022-23 school year with a total of 173 exams completed. Overall, IB students at Greeley West earned 351 college credits in 2023. Due to the COVID impact in 2020-2022, the IB cohorts had a reduction in content in all subject areas and 2023 was the first cohort since 2019 to be tested on full subject guides. I do want to point out that last year it was 59 students who took the IB exams. This year it's 112 students who are taking those exams.
I think the stories and the statistics really truly do tell us that we're giving every child every chance every day to a great education. It just makes me very, very proud to be a District Six employee. And so what I'm going to do, my name is Brian Lamos, I'm Director of Instruction and CLD, and I'm going to talk about our team's recommendations for next steps as we've heard all the stories and we've heard from Amanda and Dr. Dattery. The first step is going to be, we're going to continue to maintain two sections of grade level of Avid elective at the high school, the comprehensive high schools, and we'd like to increase that at the middle school. Currently, we do have a couple of middle schools that do offer two sections and we'd like to make sure that all of the middle schools eventually get there and get to that goal. We'd also like to continue to provide Avid Excel for students identified as multilingual learners in sixth through eighth grades. The Avid Excel course designed specifically for students identified as limited English proficient and really helps support them with their academic language and their academic writing skills. So this is another opportunity for students who are identified as language learners to get extra support if they need the Avid elective course. We'd also like to provide the Avid elective, excuse me, Avid Excel course. We'd also like to provide the Avid elective class content for the eighth grade students who attend our K8 um, schools. The eighth grade Avid elective class can make a significant impact on the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. And lastly, we'd continue to like to provide uh, summer professional learning opportunities for educators. Currently, right now, we offer really two main ones. That'd be the Avid Path Trainings and the Avid Summer Institute. And this really gives our, our educators really in-depth knowledge and it really onboards our new educators to the Avid ideas and Avid instructional strategies. Moving forward to IB and AP, excuse me, we're going backwards. Leave me alone from this. The next steps that we're recommending as a team, as we think about advanced placement in the International Baccalaureate, is continue to increase enrollment in the AP and IB courses for all students with special attention in including our language learners and also our special education students that are receiving services. And we'd also think that it's important to continue increasing our enrollment into the Diploma Program, not only at Greeley West, but anywhere that we have courses offered from the DP Program. We'd also like to think about our gender gap. Um, for, you know, students that are taking AP classes, we do have a slight difference in the gender gap and we'd like to really concentrate on how do we get more students to understand that these opportunities are available to them and that they are accessible to them. As Amanda talked about earlier, we've knocked down barriers for access to those programs. And so we want to really make sure that we market that and we really let them understand that anybody can do this and that we have the appropriate support such as Avid to help you through those rigorous courses. Then we want to continue our programming and advanced programming, horizontal teaming, meaning that many of our AP courses, as you saw earlier in slides, are singletons. And so those classes are only taught, one class is only taught um, at the high school. And so by bringing AP teachers from different comprehensive high schools together, they can co-collaborate with other educators and really talk about the curriculum and what they're seeing and what are the next steps. And then lastly, add the Career Program as an IB offering at Greeley West. So with that, I would just like to take the time to say uh, thank you for your time and um, we're here to take questions and hear any comments that you may have.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. That was quite a presentation and congratulations on, on your many accomplishments as students and as teachers and as administrators. And so I imagine we'll have a few questions for you, but Dr., I know Dr. Campus Spitsy has one.
Yeah, so some more comment, um, but a big fan of Avid. Um, you know, the fact that it's not just in secondary schools, but in primary schools. I remember last year, um, I think it was Brentwood, um, their, their Avid students all sent me letters and they all talked about the organizational skills that they were being taught, that they had backpack checks where um, the teachers would check their backpacks to be sure they were organized and their folders were neat and their homework wasn't just like shoved to the bottom of the backpack. Um, and then in the later years, being taught about Cornell notes, um, and how to organize your thinking that way. So all just skills that will serve these students so well as they take the next step to post-secondary um, education. And one comment that was made by a student, she talked about how um, a collaborative atmosphere was fostered rather than competition between the students, working together as teams and being peer tutors to each other. Um, so again, those are skills that will translate into college where you don't want to be competing. You want to be sharing your notes, working in study groups, um, and all that kind of stuff. So just, I'm so, I'm so happy that we have this program and that the numbers are growing and I'm just very proud.
Ms. Papas.
Uh, yeah, I just want to say thank you all for being here tonight and it's really rewarding and exciting to see how much growth has been made in all of these programs. And a special thank you to you, Amanda, and all of the other people, all the staff members that work so hard to um, support our students and students. I'm just reflecting on the fact that we're so grateful and so honored to have student voice in our boardroom. So thank you all for being here tonight and sharing your experiences.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. Ms. Mash.
Thank you very much for the presentation and thank you students for being here when there's just a month left of the semester. I'm sure you have lots of things to do. Um, but I just wanted to point out, um, we will be um, approving our consent agenda next and there are 28 Avid tutors that have recently been hired. So that's wonderful, um, that we'll have that full support, um, additional support for our students.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Um, I want, I want to just say congratulations again to, to all of you. I know you're, you're, you, uh, several of you I know, um, as, as teachers and students, administrators, and it's a very accomplished group. Uh, Theo, would, would you come to the microphone for just a second, though? Cause Theo, you recently received an award. Uh, would you tell us what that was? I read about it in the Greeley Tribune about two months ago.
Yeah, uh, I got, I received the Honor of National Merit Semi Finalist. So, yeah. Yeah, so, and I recently submitted my application for, um, in the hopes of getting finalist status. So, thank you.
That's great. Congratulations. Hey, one more thing, Theo. One more thing, Theo. Can you tell us how many other students in Weld County were National Merit Semi Finalists?
Like this year?
This year, this year.
None.
You're it. You're the only one. And so congratulations. And I just wanted people to get an appreciation for how, uh, how special that award is. So, thanks. Thank you for being here and congratulations. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your time, um, and being here tonight. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically do not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon, not to individual board members. This board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech and speaker's remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified, non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that, we will bring up our first speaker tonight. Our first speaker is Ms. Stacy Castillo. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. You'll have two minutes.
What a wild ride these last 10 months have been. I've learned so much, but I've also been very disappointed. I'm disappointed to learn that board members will lash out at parents and say they're telling borderline lies despite reading data from the state of Colorado and then go on to imply that parents just aren't smart enough to understand the data. Just for the record, that parent graduated from District Six. I'm disappointed that the board president will not shut down the comments about a parent, but will shut down the comment of another board member trying to stand up for said parent, of course, after he's told to. I've learned that you've all think this is funny. I'm disappointed Mrs. Mash is not wearing her millstone tonight, especially after she so proudly displayed it on a mannequin with all of her other trophies from District Six. I've learned that the average salary of a nonprofit CEO in Denver is about $200,000. So to claim the salary of our superintendent is justified seems a little out of touch, especially in little old Greeley, Colorado. I've learned the trouble the district will go to in order to hide truths, but will allow lies to run rampant. Mrs. Dr. Pilch, sorry. Please let your mother know, I am so sorry that she thought this whole time that if I had gotten elected, that you had been fired. Since you're a fixer, you probably should have fixed that, especially because we both know that wasn't true. And finally, I've learned that there really is a greater likelihood mine or my husband's employers will be contacted by those associated with the district and the board when you stand up and say something they don't like. No wonder parents don't want to stand up for themselves or their kids. They'll be asked to step outside or their employers will be involved unnecessarily. But for those parents, I remind them of Ephesians 6:12, "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places."
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Mr. Josh Wayne Scott. Thank you for being here, Mr. Wayne Scott. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's not often that I get to come here and I get to do all sorts of great things. So today, you guys let me come down for my best friend, Laura Sneebie. She, uh, as you can see, she left, she knew I was going to do this and so she was like, I'm getting embarrassed. Um, but Laura Sneebie, I have worked with her for over a decade doing after-school programs, um, and she is pedal to the metal all the time. She is going as fast as she can to make sure as many kids are getting all the services and the education that they deserve. She makes me a better employee because I got to keep up with that. And like, I think I'm pretty good, but man, to get on her, it's a whole nother level. She's been through so many ups and downs in her personal life, in her family's life, but never has she let that impact what she can do for kids in our district. I'm proud to work side by side with her. She's done after-school program for over 15 years. Before we had money from mill levies and bonds, uh, our transportation department couldn't get kids to their homes after school. Uh, and as you can see, when we got here tonight, it's already dark. Our after-school programs went until December. She walked kids home at the night, all by herself in Maple Woods neighborhood. And if you've never been there sometimes, it's a little, it's a little interesting. She is a field trip extraordinaire. Nobody has a better time on a field trip than the kids that she takes and she runs that like a machine. She's a summer programming expert. She knows how to make the most of her few weeks that she has with those kids during the summer to get things done. But more than anything, she is my friend. She is the reason that I continue to work as hard as I can at the schools that we can because I just want to be as good as Laura Sneebie. So you guys, you made the right decision today when giving her that award and I hope you do more of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you, uh, members of the board, Superintendent Pilch, student council representatives. I originally was just going to say a few words about the trend for restricting books, if not banning books nationwide and here in our district and say that I've always been leery of people talking about protecting because historically I've seen how women in particular have been protected right out of opportunities, um, inability to have jobs because we want to protect them and they should stay in the home. And so when I hear that we're going to protect kids, yeah, there is a valid argument for that, but I'm always leery about how that's being used. And I think we'd be better served to talk about how do we nurture compassion and empathy in our kids? And if they read about things that aren't part of their normal daily lives, that gives them an opportunity to live in somebody else's skin and walk in somebody else's shoes and develop those empathy skills. And then serendipitously, I discovered that today is National Kindness Day and think, well, how do we learn kindness? Some of that we can learn through reading because we discover things that are outside of our normal life again. And then I, listening to people here today, I thought, okay, the Shaq students talked about how much they wanted more help with mental health support. And I thought, well, when you feel seen, your mental health improves. So if you have a wide variety of books available with a wide variety of characters in them, you may see yourself in them. And I think that would affect people's mental health. When they talked about the IB Program, I think I got this quote right, that we want to create caring and culturally aware learners. I can't think of a better way than to have books that expose you to different lifestyles, different types of people to help you become a caroling, a caring and culturally aware learner. So in my last couple of seconds, thank you, Terry Papas, for eight years.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
When I first received your cease and desist letter, I had no intention of complying. Offering a public apology, discontinuing meeting attendance, or removing Facebook comments, young children in our schools are being traumatized in the gravest of ways while their parents think they're safe at school. The cover-up is bigger than I could have ever imagined. In the words of Sam Walton, "We're all working together. That is the secret." Now I'm just left to wonder, who is the grand master? This aside, after contemplation and introspection, I've determined that an apology on my part is warranted as I have knowingly and unknowingly caused many people harm. Choices I have made in my life have altered other people's lives, their peace and their well-being. My desire is for this message to reach every single man, woman and child I have ever done harm to. Please know that I am so sorry and I ask your forgiveness. My tongue is a knife, razor sharp and used without restraint. I have realized the power of my words, but I did not realize the depths of my cuts. My own precious daughter has suffered the wrath of my tongue and it is her that I dedicate this public apology to. I lost my way. I forgot. I lost my way. I forgot who I was. I forgot who I am. I have broken one of the most sacred rules and laws for mankind. Do unto others as I would have done unto me. Every choice we make develops our character, good or bad, and this, I believe, determines our quality of lives. Free will allows us the choice to do wrong. Free will is what Satan and AI seek to destroy. God's will is for us to love one another. Our own will, made apparent by our choices, reveals the master we serve. Matthew 6:24. These meetings have become liturgy rituals. The work must be exhausting. One nation under God doesn't mean what we think it means. And to proclaim Christ without Jesus is a reference to the anti. Matthew 24.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Teetz.
Good evening. My name is Steve Teetz, and I'm in District Six Greeley. There's two things. First of all, it says in the Bible, "It's more blessed to give than to receive." Mr. President Matthew Matthews, I would like to give you this. It's a book. I was going by on 10th Street, a bookstore, and this popped out. And I thank everybody on the school board to have more copies to read this. It's good for parents, but also it's good for high schoolers to, because they're, as I say, pre-adults, to know, to maybe understand their parents more and maybe to help them to be, teach, being taught how to be a better parent when they be parents. So I would like to leave this on this for you, Mr. Matthews. Second of all, that I'm getting tired of getting cussed out on the bus, Greeley Evans Transit, by your students. About a week ago, I got on the bus. Then there was some students got on, particularly three of them, and they just started cussing up a storm. And there was also some people in the public was on that there too as well. And they kept on, they kept on. Well, I've had it for years. So what I told them is, hey, we have a rule on the bus that says needs to be G language. I got cussed out more. And the people that ride the bus from the community is tired of it, and I am. In fact, I'm so tired of it that I put in a grievance form to Greeley Evans Transit. Now, do I have to put it in a grievance form to the state along with the Greeley Evans Transit that doesn't hold up to the rules? And also, if you care about your kids, they wouldn't stick it in like sardines that make it rough on everybody, including the bus driver? And there's some people that won't ride the bus because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. That concludes our public participation tonight. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Ms. Mash.
I just also wanted to celebrate that we have four new bus drivers in the district. I know they are a hot commodity and hard to come by. So I'm so glad that we have them joining our team as well as 11 substitute teachers. And to everyone else who is, who is new, welcome. I just am excited to call out those two categories because again, I know that those positions are hard to fill. And thank you for helping our, our students and our teachers get to school and, you know, to be able to have that day off when they need it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley. Director Camus Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the District Evaluation Council membership. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the membership of the District Evaluation Council as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up for board member discussion, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say by way of introduction?
I will just introduce Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Annette Overton, to come and give you a bit of an overview and to share with you the information behind the Teacher Evaluation Council.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews and members of the board and Dr. Pilch. Each year, we bring you the Evaluation Council membership and their, and we discuss their purpose and collaborative efforts between the Greeley Education Association, community members, and District Six leaders. The Board of Education approves the membership of the council annually as per Colorado state law. School districts are required to have a council with minimum makeup of one teacher, one administrator, one principal from the school district, one resident from the school district who is a parent of a child in the district, and one community member who does not have a child in district. As per the master contract, the Evaluation Council was established in 1991 to study, provide oversight, evaluate, address concerns, and develop specific recommendations for improving the district evaluation policy and procedure. District Six Master Contract also stipulates that the council is co-chaired by the Assistant Superintendent in Human Resources or Designee and the President of the Greeley Education Association or Designee. Tonight, we're here to share the membership of the Evaluation Council with you and to request your approval for the work they continue to do this year through their monthly meetings. Just recently, they've worked together to determine implications to Senate Bill 70, changing the professional practices percentages in the evaluation. The committee determined how this would impact the certified evaluation. So tonight, we've got several. I'm going to ask Ms. Spruce to come up and introduce the team that she works with and the Evaluation Council. Thank you, Ms. Overton. Thank you, Board of Education. I would like to introduce myself, Amy Spruce, HR Director and Co-Chair, along with Erin Snyder, my co-chair. And then we have some of our council joining us tonight if they'd like to stand. I have Josh Wayne Scott, Jenny Jensen, Ron Anderson. Just look at everybody standing up. Stacy Dattery and Anthony Osmus. And then unable to join us are some staff members that have other commitments tonight. Melissa Woodin is one of our teachers, as well as Kelly Kennedy. I thought I could do without looking at the sheet. And then we also have some administrators, Elizabeth Garcia, Heather Severt, and then Zachary Armstrong, another one of our teachers as well. So thank you for recognizing them this evening. So one of our committee members, just something I found out tonight, is that he has been on this committee, working collaboratively even before it was a state law, collaboratively with the association and district leadership for 44 years. That is Ron Anderson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Overton. Any questions about the Evaluation Council? Any comments from board members? I'm not seeing any, so I will say thank you, thank you all for being here. We appreciate your work. And Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Camus Spitsy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That is all the business that we have for tonight. Thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned.